Okay, I call to order our September the 5th, 2023 regular city council meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Rarabak?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Here.
Mayor Penrose?
Here.
You have a quorum. And Mayor, if I may, for approval of agenda, we did get a request from Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District to postpone their presentation, so approval of agenda would be with that item postponed.
Right, gotcha. We're going to do Pledge of Allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Okay, now we have public forum, and I have two cards. First is Margaret Gossett.
Mayor Penrose, if we could quickly get a motion on approval of agenda?
I'm sorry, I apologize. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended with Mid Peninsula postponing their presentation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Jessica, for keeping me on track. All right, now we go to public forum. And Margaret Gossett?
I am not, I have no comment. That card was from the earlier meeting.
Thank you. Lucio Avila?
Yeah, he's here.
So Ms. Avila is going to read, make her comment, and then I'm going to provide the interpretation once she's finished.
Hola, buenas noches, Mayor Penrose and members of the concilio. Quiero agradecer por habernos brindado la oportunidad de haber estado el día 17 de agosto en la reunión donde se habló del proyecto del 880 Stone Pine. Como muchos que estuvieron aquí presentes ese día, se dieron cuenta de que hubo mucha participación por ambas partes. Para nosotros ese día que preguntaron sobre los planos que si nos gustaban, cómo estaba diseñado, qué querían poner o qué querían quitar, o cuáles eran las preocupaciones que se tenía sobre este proyecto. Para mí, como para muchos de los que estuvimos, nos pareció muy bonito, perfecto, era la palabra. ¿Y por qué se nos parecía así? Porque nosotros que estamos en busca de una vivienda digna, la vamos a ver hermoso como esté, porque es muy grande la necesidad aquí en Half Moon Bay y sus alrededores. El tener una esperanza, un proyecto de vivienda, ha hecho que la gente vuelva a creer, vuelva a tener esperanza de una vivienda. Que estos proyectos sigan, que no se detengan, porque hay cienes de familias buscando un lugar donde vivir, un lugar donde puedan descansar, un hogar para su familia. Muchas gracias por el apoyo y por darnos la oportunidad de ser parte de esto. Gracias.
Thank you, Lucio.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Penrose and all members of the council. I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity today on the 17th of August in the meeting where we talked about the 880 Stone Pine project. Lot of people were there present that day, and they were able to see there was a lot of participation on both parts, on both sides of the fence. For us, that day, they asked us about the plans, that if we liked them, how it was designed, what we wanted to put there or not, or take out, and what were also our concerns that we had in regard to the project. For me, like many of the people that were there, it was really nice. Perfect would be the word. And why is it like that for us? Well, because for us, that we're looking for housing, dignified housing, we're going to see this as something beautiful, like they are, because it's a huge need here in Half Moon Bay and in the surrounding vicinity. So to have hope, this housing project has allowed people to once again believe and to have that hope of having housing. Let's get these projects, let's continue with these projects, let's not stop them because there's hundreds of families looking for a place to live, a place where they can rest, a place where they can call home for themselves and their family. Thank you very much for all the support and for giving us the opportunity to be a part of this. Thank you.
Next, we have William Herlin or Havlin. Please correct me, I don't, I don't...
Thank you. I'm called Bill Havlin.
Havlin, thank you.
The way to remember this is it's like heaven with a little L in it. On this particular topic, I'm speaking of unaffordable housing and in favor of it. I'm a leader at the Unitarian Universalist Coastside Community centered in Half Moon Bay, and I'm here as a representative of the Coastside Faith in Action. And I want to be one of the voices that reminds you of the importance of affordable housing. The average minimum wage worker earns about $32,000 a year, and if you look at rents for houses, that's $36,000 a year. So these are puzzle pieces that do not match. It extends beyond minimum wage workers. If you take teachers in our local school district, they're having a hard time keeping up. They have starting salaries of $58,000 a year for entry level, and they also have a problem. And I'm sure municipal employees, if you ask them, they will have the same challenge as I have heard from them. And I think this needs to be said and more than once, but thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Bill Havlin. Do we have anything, anyone online for public forum?
We do. Our first speaker is Joanne Brokowski.
I am a member of Coastside Faith in Action and also the Unitarian Universalist Coastside Community. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to make a public comment this evening. A report that I recently read from the Turner Center in Berkeley stated that at the time state law AB 1482 was passed in 2019, rents typically increased 3% a year in San Francisco, much lower than the rent cap at that time that was established by the law. But at the time of the study, when it was done in 2022, rents were already growing three to five times greater every year, and 60% of the rental listings that they reviewed showed annual price increases above the rent cap allowed in the state law. So how does this translate to the situation now in Half Moon Bay? Meeting after meeting, I know you hear testimony about unaffordable rent in this community. So I'm asking, I'm pleading with you, what can you do, what will you do to stabilize rent in Half Moon Bay? What else can you possibly do? Please take steps to keep renters in their homes now. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Our next speaker is Shawna Pickett-Gordon.
Hi, I'm Shawna, and I'm also from Faith in Action Coastside. I want to express my gratitude, our gratitude, for the building projects for affordable rents that are in progress and under review, and I've just been really impressed by the beauty and usefulness and attractiveness and livability, apparent livability of those projects, and by how well the community has been included, and not once, but many times. We need housing that all of our workers and families can afford, especially those who are working at minimum wage and doing the jobs that we can't get along without them doing, the essential jobs. As we've heard in previous city council meetings, minimum wages before tax don't come up to the average rental in the area, and that's not to consider any other kind of living expenses. I just don't know how folks are going to pull them out of the air, or emergencies, or saving proof for retirement, which is like just a pipe dream for a lot of people. So we know we need more of these building developments for affordable, very, very low rental and affordable rentals as soon as we can get them going. So my ask this evening is about seriously working on rent controls in the meanwhile so that we can bring the two ends together and people can find ways to stay on the coast side, keep the farms alive, keep the shops alive. And I just, I really would like to see us find a way of lowering rents, or subsidizing rents, or somehow making rents that they have to pay in the meanwhile, waiting for those good affordable places. And keeping families here, keeping families in their homes, and not three families to an apartment, which far too many are doing just to cope. I would love to hear about what is actually being considered and discussed in these halls in the way of rent controls. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna.
I have no other speakers, ma'am.
Thank you. That concludes public forum. We'll move on to proclamations and presentations. We have two this evening. The first is September Suicide Prevention Month. Sadly, in 2022, 67 people died by suicide in San Mateo County, and over 13,000 calls were received by the San Mateo County Star Vista Crisis Line. Clearly, people are looking for help, and the Half Moon Bay City Council urges residents to renew their efforts in supporting each other and helping prevent suicide. We can all learn about what signs to look for, what are the right words to communicate, and what are the resources that can provide the necessary support for those who are suffering. Important information like this is online at cdc.gov-suicide. The San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Office of Diversity and Equity, the mayor's mental health initiative, and other partners are collectively organizing community activities throughout September to bring more awareness to this important issue. Updates are online at smchhealth.org/spm for Suicide Prevention Month. For anyone who is experiencing emotional distress, please know that you are loved, you are not alone, people care, and there are resources to help you. The city council is hoping that this proclamation will help to further spread this important message throughout the community. I am happy to introduce Mike Akana from our CARES program to accept this proclamation and share some information with us. Mike?
Yeah, thanks. I think this is it. National Recovery Month. I haven't signed it yet. I haven't signed it yet. Mike, can you give me one minute to sign the proclamation? I apologize. It's a good thing staff keeps me together. Thank you, Mike.
Did you sign the next one?
I'm going to.
My name is Michael Akana. I'm the executive director of El Centro de Libertad and resident of 324 Correios here in Half Moon Bay. And I brought out the wrong sheet there, so I'll just go on. If you're experiencing a mental health crisis, you're not alone. The stigma of mental health drives us to silence. We must initiate open conversations to talk away the dark. Yes, there's a national 988 hotline, and we have the county hotline. Those are great resources, but as a resident, I'm proud of our city of Half Moon Bay, proclaiming here today the month of September as Suicide Prevention Month. And proud, here in Half Moon Bay, we have the CARES program. If you call 911, if you're asking for help, we can now provide a civilian response with a crisis intervention team to help in person. It doesn't have to be somebody in a uniform. If that's what's needed, that's still available, but sometimes we just need a compassionate, professional response by trained crisis intervention specialists. Thank you, councilmembers, and thank you, Half Moon Bay, for your support in words, for joint program management, for your funding, and for your attention to suicide prevention and mental health awareness.
Thank you, Michael. National Recovery Month is also in September, so we've got two things going on in September. National Recovery Month honors and celebrates the positive steps taken and gains made by those in recovery from addiction or mental health issues, just as we recognize improvements made by those who are managing physical health conditions. National Recovery Month also promotes and supports evidence-based treatment and recovery practices and increases public awareness surrounding mental health and addiction recovery. There are millions of Americans whose lives have been transformed through their own journey in recovery, whether clinical, nonclinical, self-managed, or a combination of these pathways. Since these successes often go unnoticed by the broader population, National Recovery Month provides a vehicle for everyone to recognize these accomplishments. Treatment and prevention providers across the communities of San Mateo County have dedicated themselves to promoting recovery, saving lives, destigmatizing and educating the public about substance abuse and co-occurring disorders. Every day in Half Moon Bay, men, women, and youth engage in treatment for substance misuse and mental health disorders, and take steps on the road to wellness and recovery in a system which emphasizes behavioral health as an essential part of overall health. Our city and its partners, including San Mateo County, continue to support National Recovery Month's mission toward improving the lives of those who face these issues daily, to celebrate individuals in recovery and to acknowledge the dedicated people working to provide integrated recovery services. During National Recovery Month, we encourage the community to remember that prevention works, treatment is effective, and the many success stories related to addiction and mental health issues prove that recovery happens. Now, I'm happy to introduce Andres, Sarah, Lucio, and Jacob from Life Moves, who will accept this proclamation and share a bit more on this topic.
Good evening, Mayor Penrose, Vice Mayor Jimenez, members of the council, staff, members of the community. My name is Sarah Fields. I work as the Director of Community Engagement and Public Affairs for Life Moves. I just want to say really thank you so much for the continuing partnership and efforts between Life Moves, the city of Half Moon Bay, the county, and the state, which brought us here to our Coast House facility. Andres and Lucio will be sharing a little bit more about the specific work and recovery that happens at the site.
Hello, everybody, Mayor and council. So I'm the Director at Coast House Shelter, and I've been with the site since we opened three years ago. I've seen amazing stories of clients that were homeless 10, 15, 20 years in Half Moon Bay, living under the bridge and struggling with substance abuse. And once they came to our site, we connected them with the county, with different agencies such as El Centro de Libertad, and they were able to get the support they needed, and now they're happily housed all over the Bay Area. So I really appreciate the opportunity for us to be here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. It's a great, great program, and Life Moves is a wonderful organization. We move on to Mayor's announcement of community activities, and I'm going to just mention a couple of things that are going on. Wednesday at 7:00 PM, The Odd Fellows is having Ernie Kepf Fish Tales, talking about the history of the fishing industry here in Half Moon Bay. Should be very interesting. Friday night at 7:00 PM, there's a fundraiser for Maui Strong, or held by Maui Strong at the San Benito House. This is all about the fire on Maui. Sunday at 4:00 PM, Taste of the Coast is happening at Senior Coastsideers, where food from almost, I think it's probably every restaurant in Half Moon Bay will be tasted and enjoyed. And Wednesday on the 13th of September at 6:00 PM, the Half Moon Bay Downtown Plan Community Input begins at the IDES, and also at the library, and I can't remember the dates for the libraries, I think it was the 12th to the 14th, and it's at 1:00. Do you remember the times, Julissa?
9:00.
9:00 AM?
9:12 and 1:05.
9:12 and 1:05 on the 12th, the 13th, and the 14th? Great, thank you. And that's it for Mayor's announcements. Our attorney, Catherine Enberg, will report out on recent closed session meetings.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The council did meet in closed session prior to the special study session this evening to discuss one item of pending litigation, city of Half Moon Bay versus Granada Community Services District at all. Nothing to report out.
Thank you. We move on to city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two updates tonight. Both will be presented by Todd Sealy, our Public Works Superintendent. Todd?
I thought I had the assistant. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Jimenez, and councilmembers. I'm here to give you guys some good news tonight. Next slide, please. So as some of you are probably aware, we just undertook a project recently to completely renovate the Mac Dutra Restrooms. Next slide. So this is kind of an overview of what we were looking at before. The partitions were falling down. It's not very inviting for visitors. To be blunt, there was odor issues in some of the restrooms because of the porous flooring and dated fixtures, and it was just in general disrepair. We had a capital improvement project in the last fiscal year that city council generously gave us some funds to do this. So with those funds, we were able to do this. Next slide, please. All right, so we have completely renovated the entire restrooms. We added new skylights, new tile, all new fixtures, partitions. Because of the tiling, we're pretty confident that it's going to have significant amounts of odor reduction, particularly in the men's room, and it's a much more modern styling, and it's more inviting and welcoming to those that are visiting Mac Dutra. I know I was auditing the last session you guys had, and it was mentioned that Mac Dutra is kind of a place for people to gather and maybe have lunch and stuff like that, and the restrooms in the condition they were in before just weren't really conducive to that, so we're pretty excited to be able to finish it. We finished this up last Friday afternoon, so they were able to be open for the nice long holiday weekend. Shout out to Maz, who gave us the free will to just do whatever he put his trust in us, and we got it all accomplished, and especially shout out to all the maintenance crew who worked ridiculously long hours to get it open for the holiday weekend. We knew it was important because we had the three-day weekend last weekend, so that's good, and that is finished, and they are open for the public now. Any questions about the restrooms before we move on to the next item?
I just want to say, add more restrooms to the streetscape list. Yes, but thank you for that.
No, 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 not a problem.
That's a really, really important project.
That's great, Todd, thank you.
As long as when we add them to the streetscape list, we don't have to build them. We let the contractors do it. Public Works is totally okay with all that. We'll maintain them when we need to. The next update I have for you is an interesting one. It's some life buoys that we installed at the beaches throughout town. Next slide, please. So we installed these three buoys with signage and mounted them on posts at three locations. The bigger picture is at the bottom of Poplar. The upper-left picture is at what we call the slot, where the horses are able to access the beach, and the third one is at Canyatta Verde, also known as the bottom of the Ritz. We were able to do this with support from the RNA Foundation. Their website's up there if anyone's interested. A tragic story, but something good is going to come out of it in that we were able to get this informational stuff out there for the public. So it's buoys with instructions on how to use them and signs to look out for rip currents and sneaker waves and stuff like that. So they're in pretty good locations where public can see them, and if they take the time to read the information, good for them. And also, we have the buoys at the locations now, so we feel that the community is in much better shape if there is another incident that happens in the future.
How do you use the buoys, Todd?
So those red cases on the bottom just lock, and then after that, I'm not a lifeguard. So I mean, realistically, they're personal flotation devices, so you're going to use them to get them out to the people that are struggling, to give rescuers time to get out there, right?
Hey, the red thing, the red circular thing there?
It's like a clam show, and the buoy is actually inside them.
Okay, thank you.
The point is to get the buoy out to someone that's maybe struggling swimming or having a hard time when they're caught in a rip current, and just give the first responders, whether it be Coast Guard or the Rangers, whoever's out there, time to get to them and help them out. So basically, it's just giving additional time to those in need.
Great, thank you. That's wonderful.
Is the rope only 100 feet? That's what I thought I had heard.
Yeah, I think it is 100. Yeah, I think it is 100 feet.
That doesn't make a lot of sense.
It doesn't. I think we're limited by space, though. So if we were to put like another 100-foot rope on there, we would have to almost double the size of the container. And this was done in a partnership, so it's, I won't call it a pilot program, but we're trying them out to see how it's going. And 100 feet is a pretty fair distance. The rip currents do come in pretty close to the shoreline. So in an emergency situation, I think it would probably be enough and hopefully be helpful and be able to mitigate some of those incidents out there.
I hope so.
Todd, as visual, can you please show us how long are 100 feet here in the room?
So 100 foot would probably be about from that doorway to the glass doorway over there.
That's pretty good length.
That's pretty, it's a decent length. It's not terrible. We've got to get a good, put a little something into it if you're trying to get it out there, but I think it's possible.
Yeah, thank you. That was, whoever came up with this, it's a great idea. I've seen them all. So when I first saw them, it was a couple of weeks ago.
Couple of weeks ago, yes, sir.
Yeah, I saw it, I was like, good. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. All right. Just have a good night.
And that's it for City Updates to Council. We'll move on to Consent Calendar. Does anyone in council wish to pull anything from the Consent Calendar? May I have a motion, then?
I move that we adopt the Consent Calendar, including Items 1A, waiving reading of the Resolutions and Ordinances; Item 1B, approval of minutes; Item 1C, Mayor's amended list of City Council Representatives and designated assignments for 2023; Item 1D, resolution in opposition to offshore drilling, activities and expansion of offshore drilling in the Pacific Ocean; Item 1E, final acceptance of the 2023 street maintenance project; Item 1F, adoption of additional findings to justify local modifications to the 2022 California Building Standards Code; Item 1G, a side letter between the City of Half Moon Bay and the represented management team to add a classification and specialized license pay to the memorandum of understanding. And that's it. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Consent Calendar passes, then. We move on to ordinances and public hearings, and there are none. Resolutions and staff reports, 3A, partnership agreement with Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Been a while since I've been at the table. Nice to see you tonight.
Introduce yourself, please.
John Dowdy, Assistant City Manager. And thank you. Tonight, I'm here to present to you and the community a partnership agreement proposed between the city and the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District for the Johnston House property. This agreement would cover master planning, environmental review, and ultimately coastal development permitting from San Mateo County for the Johnston House Train Depot property. And a little bit of background. The Johnston House Train Depot property is owned by the city, but it is located within unincorporated San Mateo County, which means we are subject to review and approval for all permitting environmental through San Mateo County planning folks. We also work collaboratively with the Johnston House Foundation, who miraculously rebuilt and saved the property there, the house. And we continue to work with the friends to figure out what their long-range plans are. And this project, I think, provides a great opportunity for additional conversation for their future plans as well. Again, going back to 2019, in January, the council approved and adopted the city's parks master plan. And in that plan, like the Smith Field project that you approved last year, it recommended that we do a more in-depth evaluation, master planning process for what the future uses and activities at this property and what that should look like. And part of that also was a very extensive plan for community engagement and obviously work with our Parks and Recreation Commission closely with that work. In October of 2019, following that, the city signed a letter of intent, which among other things expressed support for the city's planned public use efforts for Johnston House, but also to collaborate on future potential planning for trail and trailhead access at and near the Johnston House Train Depot property with the district. And on November 2021, the district did finally acquire the Johnston Ranch Uplands property, and they adopted a preliminary use and management plan, which among other things includes a loop trail that would begin and end in the upper portion near Johnston House itself, in that upper-reach area, which has tremendous views and access out to the west. Very excited about those opportunities. The district and city staff have been working for some time on this partnership agreement. In part, it was delayed just simply because of COVID-related issues, and then ultimately around the issues of acquisitions for the Ranch Uplands. And finally, recently, it kind of synced together that we start to finalize this, and that's what we have done. And that's what is being brought tonight. On the 26th of July, the Board of Directors for the district authorized the GM to execute the partnership agreement, obviously pending City Council approval. So a little bit of the background of how we got here. I won't read this. I'll save you that from this point. This is in the staff report. But it just again reiterates that we are looking at doing CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act review. We're looking at master planning along with extensive public outreach and just looking at what can go on this. Again, looping in the loop trail alignment and working through that. And the objective of this would be to consolidate environmental review, planning, master planning, and ultimately the coastal development permit process with both the city's property and the adjoining Uplands area there where the trail is proposed above Johnston House. There is a financial commitment associated with this, and I want to just point that out. I know it was in the earlier slide, but I think this is important. What we have concluded and are recommending is a 50-50 share of all the related costs here for the work that's proposed. The consultant cost, assuming would not exceed $700,000 in total, $350,000 from each party. We are hopeful, and we'll do everything that we can to keep those prices and costs down as we look at consultant services. This does commit the city to running most of this effort, but in, I think, an interesting turn, we have received the okay from the district for them to run the grants program piece to this deal and work with us to try to find the money. One, to potentially deal with this phase of development, but more importantly, for actual implementation of the plan. And I think that's the really critical piece. And I think we all can recognize that they have a very grant-getting capability with just their background experience and track record. And again, the agreement describes the various roles, responsibilities, but I'm, to be very frank, this is really a pretty big lift by the city. But it is our park. It's our land for the most part. And we feel like we've developed a strong relationship and working relationship with the district in that we can and will work together well toward this. And this would not become effective and something we would look at until next year's budget and capital improvement program. So this is not a request for amendment or modification of the current budget. And this would give an opportunity for us to all look at where we stand at mid-year as well going into the fiscal year budget for next year. And as we all know, if there is a need, we can come back and revisit this if necessary. And I think timing is somewhat flexible for both parties in this. And so I don't, you know, we don't feel like this is a lock-in to this point. We're looking to and want to start this process. But should there be issues, I think we can look at an extension of time if necessary. And again, our recommendation would be to adopt the resolution, authorize the city manager to execute this partnership agreement. Thank you.
Counsel, are there any questions? Clarifying questions? Okay, we'll go to public comment.
I have no online speakers.
Okay, and I don't see anybody from the audience. So we'll come back to council for comments or questions. Councilmember, sorry, Raarback was... Yeah.
Very briefly, I'm very glad to see that we're making progress. This is an underutilized area, and I'm happy to see that we're going to cooperate with MROSD. So that's good.
Okay, Councilmember Ruddock.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. We, I think, benefit from a strong relationship with the district. And I think it has, the Johnston House has a potential for some real exciting recreational amenities. And I would recommend, I'm sure they're probably looking at it, but there, you know, there's going to be ultimately a resilience bond going before the legislature, probably not until January now. But I'm hoping that they're looking at language potentially in the legislation that would cover things like, you know, grants for historical properties and things like that. Usually, there is some sort of historical money, but it would be good to just double-check that and send a little word their way. You know, is Joshua talking to, you know, Assembly Member Garcia? Kind of a thing. So other than that, though, I think this will pay off in the future. So yeah, support it.
I agree. I support this, especially right now that we're talking about, you know, on Main Street and how to connect, you know, South Main to the Johnston House, you know, to the trail. It's, I mean, having trail, and I'm actually thinking about another trail that we could extend from that site that eventually I want to bring up, you know, with a possibility, you know, working with Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space, you know, to think about and expanding that trail somewhere else. But it's needed, and I'm supporting this.
Okay.
Nothing to add. Agree with my fellow council members. Glad to see it moving forward.
Yeah. Think it's a great thing that we're working with Mid Peninsula. They're a great organization, and the Johnston House is a great site. I'm looking forward to seeing ideas for community gardens, for public spaces that people can enjoy and recreate in there. So great job. Thank you, John. Okay, do we need a resolution? Would someone like to resolve for us?
Sure. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a partnership agreement, which is Exhibit 8, the resolution with Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District affirming general terms and processes for partnering on the planning, design, environmental review, and permitting at the Johnston House Train Depot site.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Raarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruddock?
Yes.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We move on to something I'm very excited about. The Opportunity Center of the Coastside and our lease agreement on Main Street. Yay.
Great, yay indeed. Good evening again, Mayor Penrose and council and community. My name is Karen Decker. I'm the Economic and Community Vitality Manager within your city manager's office. And I am so delighted to be before you presenting on this item, which is the 637 Main Street property as our site for the soon-to-be Opportunity Center of the Coastside. The team is excited to finally have a property in our line of sites so the Opportunity Center can become a reality. The city manager and the HMB Partners LLC, who I'll refer to as the property owners, signed a letter of intent in early August, and then staff brought an outline of the terms of a lease agreement before you in a closed session of the council on August 15, and received support to pursue a lease agreement. First, I'd like to share some high-level summary of these lease terms, and then I'll share some of the next steps in terms of plans for programming and services. And before you, you'll see an aerial view of the location of 637 Main Street, which is across from Bank of America and next to the new Inkspell location. The lease agreement will be in effect October 1 of this year for a term of two years, and we will have the option to extend for an additional three years. The monthly lease amount will be $11,000 with a 3% increase each subsequent year. The lease is subsidized by a grant from the County of San Mateo, and the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau will be a sublease. We will be utilizing the entire downstairs, known as Suites A, B, and C, which includes all of those suites and approximately 3,900 square feet. And we expect modest tenant improvements will be needed to support programming and operational flow. In terms of programs and services, we do see this property as an ideal location. We scouted a lot of locations, and this one is easily accessible to public transit lines and highways. And it's in close proximity to supportive and complimentary services like the Half Moon Bay Library, like City Hall, like core nonprofit providers, like the soon-to-be College of San Mateo campus, which should be a stone's throw from this location. And of course, restaurants and retail. Hopefully, people visiting these services will develop new patterns, and we could attract local residents to downtown. As you know, the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce will provide the operational and facility support for OCC programming. On-site job seeker and small business development and entrepreneurial support will be delivered by qualified contract providers. We are prepared to start services as soon as next month, and we can do so in flexible ways while tenant improvements are being completed. There is precedent for this with other economic advancement centers, and we've had these conversations with our partners. So hope to be coming back before you with news about a grand opening celebration. But first things first, we're seeking authorization to execute a lease agreement for the ground floor of 637 Main and to execute a sublease with the Half Moon Bay Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. And I would be happy to take any comments or questions at this time.
Can you explain a little bit about what the center is going to be doing?
Sure. So someone might be entering the Opportunity Center because they're walking by and they're dropping in for the same reasons they would currently drop into the chamber or the Visitors Bureau. They just want some more information. Someone who is looking for a job, either because they currently don't have one or they already have a job, but they're looking for a more, say, high-wage, high-impact job. They might be looking to reskill, especially after the pandemic. Maybe they're commuting, and they want to look at more local opportunities. Maybe they are interested in the trades. Maybe they're interested in higher education. Anybody who, with any of those options, should be able to go to the Opportunity Center and meet with a qualified provider who can explain these options to them. We will also be serving startups and small businesses that just need help. Maybe they need access, you know, a referral to an accountant. Maybe they need to access a line of credit. Maybe they need help with branding and social media. Maybe they're up and running, but they've never recorded a podcast. Maybe they need digital navigation support. So those are all realistic examples, and... So those are all realistic examples, and this is not new ground. This is already being provided by the service providers that we're speaking to. There's also a third component, which will be the last component, that can be space for an innovative incubator. While incubators are not new, I would like to think that our assets on the coast are special, and we would like to cultivate growth industries like regenerative agriculture, like being creative about client mitigation and adaptation. We have labor market analysis on growth industries. So how can we harness some of that on the coast, especially in light of this new college campus? And how could we do it in a way that is supportive of the environment, that also creates local jobs? So the incubator is kind of the third component, but the first two buckets are priorities that we're going to be running with, the job seeker services and the small business development support.
That's great. Will it also be a place where somebody who is unemployed and wants to work but doesn't know how to go about getting a job, doesn't even know what kind of a job they want? Is this going to be a resource center for someone like that?
Absolutely. A lot of job seekers don't have that clarity and don't know exactly where they want to work, much less the path to get there. So absolutely, that's a great example.
Great, thank you.
Question. Is it going to be multilingual, bilingual? We have different languages available for the community?
Yes. Yes, we will have access to different languages. And when you first walk into the Opportunity Center, you will be greeted by a bilingual, English, Spanish-speaking staff who will be able to do a warm handoff to whatever service it is you're seeking.
Other questions from the council? A comment, please?
Should we go to public?
Yeah. Is there any public comment?
I have no public speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll take comments from council then. Vice Mayor Jimenez.
Thank you. I've been waiting for this for, you know, since we came up since in 2020. So I'm very happy. I'm very happy that it's downtown Half Moon Bay. I'm very happy there's going to be, you know, offer, you know, bilingual information. And it's, it's a great opportunity for community. You know, we have, I mean, the Half Moon Bay is a location where I see opportunity for entrepreneur, you know, opportunities, new businesses, restaurants, I mean, so many different things. And it's going to be offered, and the other thing is about, you know, the employment opportunity. That it's something that has been missing, you know, Half Moon Bay. Back when, you know, Bay City closed in 2019, you know, it, it was actually my job for a few months right before the pandemic to help people find employment, the people that became unemployed. And so we needed that back then, you know, right before this, you know, is happening, I mean, it's working. So as you were reading, you know, as you were talking about, you know, what other services are going to be offered here, I was getting the chills, you know, it's just, it's excitement. I'm very happy about this is finally happening. So congratulations to everybody for, you know, putting a lot of hard work into this. And I'm sure, you know, the community will be very grateful, you know, for, to have this available for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments?
Yeah, I just want to say this is an exceptional service for a town that this size of 15,000 people, having its own Opportunity Center. Typically, you would have something maybe at the county level, and people would have to go over the hill. But to bring these kind of exceptional and intimate coaching and counseling services for folks who might feel, you know, that maybe they just don't have the training, maybe they've been laid off, jobs are changing. And to have folks who can provide that emotional support and say, you know what, you can continue on a job you're working that you're not crazy about, but there are training opportunities, both online and person, and really build people's confidence is really just an exceptional resource. It's amazing that we're having that here, and you can't underestimate it. And I can't believe it's going to open on October 1st, and we will start having success stories, I imagine, pretty quickly. So thanks for all the work that staff has put into this. It's been a major project, and finding the space, I think, the spirits were looking over us to finally pull that together. So I lit a candle, you know, so I'm glad it, glad it works. So, yeah, thank you all for making this reality.
Thank you.
Hard act to follow. Just want to say, ditto, everything Robert said. And I know it was, it took a long time to put together, but everybody persevered and got some local resources. And it's amazingly, it's going to help with our sustainability and our recovery. And I just like the idea of creating more mobility for people and giving them, you know, flexibility in terms of their futures. You know, it's, it's hopeful. I like hopeful right now. So thanks for all you're doing. It's great.
Okay. Councilmember Raabak?
It is hopeful. It's really good. So I'm thrilled that we're actually going to implement this, so thank you.
One of the thoughts that I had, while people were talking, was, you know, we have so many people who are long-term residents of Half Moon Bay, whose children move away because there aren't opportunities here. Or they move away because they don't know what opportunities are available, period. So I think this is one of the ways we can encourage our youth not to leave and to, to stay and help us to grow Half Moon Bay the way we want it grown. So thank you, staff. It's, it's wonderful. Great job. May I have a resolution, please? A motion, please?
Sure. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to X to one, execute a lease agreement for approximately 3,900 square feet of commercial space located on the first floor of 637 Main Street, Suites A, B, and C, effective on October 1st, 2023, at, at an initial monthly rate of $11,000 for a term of two years, with the option to extend for an additional three years to serve as the physical site and support operations of the Opportunity Community Center of the Coastside. And two, execute a sublease with the Half Moon Bay Chamber of Commerce Visitors Authority for a portion of the premises to be determined at the same rate per square foot and terms as the lease agreement.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Raabak?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
You betcha.
Motion carries.
We are moving on to Item 3C, funding and contract approval for the Poplar Street Traffic Calming and Safety Project, Phase 1, CIP Project Number 599. No, 593, sorry.
Talk about a tough act to follow. Sorry, hold on one second while I find our PowerPoint for this item.
Sure.
Sorry about this.
Look at your email from John.
Sorry about that. I am Oz Boszerginia, the Public Works Director and City Engineer for Half Moon Bay, and I'm here to present tonight the Poplar Street Traffic Calming and Safety Project. There'll be two separate actions tonight. I can run through the first part of the PowerPoint, and then we can talk about the second part afterwards, just to keep it a little bit more simple. So just overall, I'm going to do a little overview, background and project scope. There's been a lot of community meetings on this topic over the course of the last few years. And then we'll talk a little bit about cost sharing and deferred street agreements, and then ultimately talk about the construction contract award. And we, we'll have a couple of recommendations. So just a little bit of background, this project has been on the books for a while now. 2017 was the first time where the city received some funding to look at a project for Poplar Street. In 2020, we had made quite a bit of headway and had some community meetings, but unfortunately due to COVID-19 and associated budget reductions and project suspensions, that was one of the ones, unfortunately, that was put on pause at that time. And fast forward to August of 2021, the project restarted through council action to bring that project back to, back to the forefront. And over the last couple of years, we've been going through a number of community meetings, notices to residents, individuals impacted by the deferred, the deferred street agreements, as well as planning commission and city council meetings. So for the project scope, the Phase 1 project, as we call it, is from Main Street to Highway 1. And this project is to incorporate five-foot, five-foot wide concrete sidewalks on the north side of Poplar, between that, in that, that segment of the, of Poplar Street, a six-foot decomposed granite or DG pathway on the south side, bio-retention areas and planter strips, parking lanes, street, additional street trees, traffic calming, including ballbouts, and some high-visibility crosswalks and, and street markings. So as part of the, part of our conversations that we've had over the last several years have been focused about, on these long-term deferred street agreements, or DSAs. And what these DSAs are, during the time of development in the past, the city, for certain properties and developments, the city would, instead of requiring improvements at the time of construction, they would enter into these deferred street agreements, which would basically be a deferral of those agreements until there is a more complete project or contiguous project that's presented in front of them. And so over the course of, over the course of the time of, over the course of the years, this has changed a little bit. In more recent times, we've been implementing improvements rather than taking these deferred street agreements. In some cases, we've taken fee, direct fees in place of it. So we've, it's been, it's a challenge to implement DSAs in the future. And so we've been trying to get away from some of that as we move forward. But for this project, there are several of them on this, and we've looked at a couple of different options and alternatives as far as how to approach this from a equitable and straightforward way. So in the report, we provided a couple of options. The first option, we looked at the overall project construction estimate, and then what we did was removed the amount of grant funding we had available. And so that looked at the amount of funds that are available, that, that would be necessary to build it. And then we applied that to, to find a linear foot cost, essentially, how much does it cost to build this project per foot in order to, they put it to a point where we can actually relate this cost between different properties. And so in this particular option, we came to a conclusion of $146 approximately per linear foot. And then what we would do is apply that linear foot cost to the width of the properties that have a DSA or could have one in the future. And so that's, this, that was one of the alternatives that we came up with to, to make it simple and also straightforward and equitable for all, all folks involved. And so, you know, for, for some of the narrowest lots, we have some 49-foot lots. It would be somewhere in the vicinity of $7,200. And then there's some wider lots, and 57 and some change is the highest, is the widest lot in this project area. So they'd be, that cost would look closer to $8,300. And then just if we go based off of this breakdown, we just wanted to give an idea of what that would look like for the remaining DSAs, so the total deferred properties. We would be looking at potentially collecting close to $40,000. And then there's another $60,000 if you, when we consider undeveloped or underdeveloped lots that could be subject to this fee in the future. So that was one of the first, that was the first option. Then the second option was, we looked at, it's kind of the same metric, trying to come up with a linear foot cost that we can apply to, to the width of the property, because that seemed to be the, the most equitable way, because any project, any development would be required to do that frontage area in front of that property. And in this option, the only difference is we took some of the traffic calming elements out of it. Because generally, for a project, for a development, you know, for a single-family infill project, we may not be asking for a lot of traffic calming elements. And so this was one of the other alternatives we considered, given that, you know, we're looking at what we would be asking for folks to, to actually build during that time of construction. And so that, the only difference is that we, we removed that portion of the cost associated with some of those traffic calming elements from the, from the estimate, as well as the grant amounts, and then we came up with a dollar value of $62 a foot, rounded up about $60 a foot. And so based on this metric, the, on the low end, it would be about three, a little over $3,000 for a lot for this defer, to have a DSA. And for some of the, and for the wider one, it's closer to $3,600. And then just a general, you know, just an approximate cost calculation of all the deferreds would be contributing about $16,700. And then the potential for underdeveloped, undeveloped lots would be a little under $26,000. And then there is the option of actually looking at other alternatives. We didn't want to go, we wanted to provide two options that were straightforward and equitable in our, in our opinion. But there's certainly other ways that we could look at this, these alternatives. And so one option we wanted to provide is if, you know, if this was an area of concern, we can always continue the conversation. So I don't know if there's any questions on this piece before I move on to the next.
Yeah, I have a question. Can you go to the last slide? We're talking about undeveloped lots and the cost for undeveloped lots being 25-plus thousand. How many lots are we talking about there compared to the deferred properties? So...
Absolutely. We have seven deferred properties on this segment of the project right now. And then we have another, I believe, 15 properties that are underdeveloped or undeveloped.
We have twice the number of undeveloped as we do deferred. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it seems to me that part of the, part of being equitable would be to consider the deferred properties and give them kind of a break. So the numbers don't quite work for me that way. I don't quite... I'm talking about Option 2. And Option 2, if there are 15 undeveloped lots, if you divide 15 into 25,000, you know, you're going to come up with one figure. If you divide 7 into 16, that figure's going to be higher. So the deferred folks are actually paying more per lot than the undeveloped lots are paying. Is that correct?
No, I don't, I don't believe that is the case, because what we're looking at is applying a linear foot cost per, for, for each property. So the width of the undeveloped lot would be paying that cost of that line item, whether it's Option 1, 2, or something else. And that would be multiplied by the width of the lot. So in either case, the, the linear foot cost would be set based on something that we would apply for anybody on this segment of street, and it would just be multiplied by the width of the property.
Okay, so it's the same amount, essentially, whether it's deferred or underdeveloped?
And if you have a wider lot, you know, or a smaller lot, that would be the, that would be the change.
Yeah. And when we do, the other question I had is, when somebody buys a property in Half Moon Bay and decides they want to put a house on it, what do they pay currently for improvements? Moon Bay and decides they want to put a house on it, what do they pay currently for improvements?
For public improvements?
For public improvements, like sidewalk, streets.
Generally, they would be paying, yeah, they would be paying market value, whatever the contractor that they secure. A lot of the costs would be, it's hard to say exactly what the linear foot cost would be, because there could be multiple bids. But I will say this, when we do a bigger project of this nature, a lot of these folks, a lot of the projects get a, it's kind of the, based on the size of the project, right? So you get a little bit of a break in your unit cost because you're doing a stretch of projects. Whereas if you get a contractor coming to do your frontage, it could be pretty expensive. So I would say, from what I've seen from some of the private developments that we've had around town recently, I would say that a lot of the developers are paying closer to $25,000 to $30,000 to do it on their own currently.
Okay, okay.
So with our project, this actually does help quite a bit. And that was part of the calculation, was to allow the OBAG II grant to support the existing properties that are impacted by this project.
Great, thank you. That answers my question. Other council members? Questions?
Not a question, just a comment. Can I go ahead?
Please.
I support option one. I believe that the people who bought these properties knew what they were doing when they were signing the deferred agreement. They will benefit from the traffic calming. The amount per lot is not outrageous. $8,000 or something is reasonable. So I think we should go ahead with option one.
Do we have anything that shows the public noticing and the public participation, the list of meetings and everything that have been held on this item?
Yeah, I did provide a little bit of an overview on the background, as far as the different public projects and meetings that have happened. We've had some very specific notices to those folks that are impacted by this discussion regarding the DSAs. So the undeveloped properties, as well as the seven properties that have the deferred street agreements, were noticed multiple times over the course of the last couple of years. Certainly going through planning commission, but as well as coming up to the city council meeting, we've been keeping those folks aware. We also have a project email, and we've been meeting with individuals for the last couple of years on project specifics, some of the concerns with regards to these deferred street agreements, as well as encroachments into the public right of way. We had a lot of folks that have built out over the years, given that the street really hadn't been properly completed. And so some of those, we've been working with a lot of folks to work through some of these issues. And the other thing I would add is, as far as the collection, the direction given to staff, we're not looking at requiring these funds upfront to build this project. This would, we can do different things to make it based on each individual's issues and concerns. We can work with them, whether it's a payment plan, or we do some sort of, something to help these folks get to it. Because I know, yeah, some people may not have an issue with $8,000. A lot of people will have issue with that one-time payment. And what I'm saying is, we will have alternatives for those folks so that we can make it equitable for folks that may have a harder time early on.
Well, I would just say that November 15, 2022, to August 31 of this year is quite a long time, and the project webpage hadn't been updated since November, December. And I think people should be able to count on the most up-to-date information as a project moves along. So I think that's a problem, a process problem, that I'd like to see corrected going forward. I think you can't communicate enough with people who are going to have to pay money, right? So I think they should have, I think some communication should have been sent more recently than November 15, and that the webpage should have been updated.
I agree, especially on the website. I think that was a little bit too long. But I will say that we did send notices for this particular meeting to all the folks impacted and have not, and received a couple of, one call regarding the item, just more curious about the direction we were going. One of the properties is actually under, I think, it sounds like they're under contract to be sold, so they wanted to disclose.
And so what about the permit conditions that will protect the property owners during construction? Like what sort of conditions will the contractor have to abide by? Like in terms of, you know, one might be dust control, stormwater and runoff, hours of operation. So like, how are the property owners being protected during construction?
Absolutely. I can, I actually have a slide later on when we talk about the construction contract award that has a little bit more information. But I have information about construction hours, our ability to modify some of those based on some of the feedback we've received over the last year or so from property owners. So I can dig into that a little bit more.
So that's a future meeting?
No, it's right after this discussion.
Oh, that's right, right.
Yeah, so as soon as we're done with the deferred street conversation, I'm happy to jump into that.
Okay, great, thank you.
But I figured this was a good spot to kind of pause before we continue.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Sir, are you going to ask us to first to separate the resolutions out, first do one?
I think what I was going to do is just kind of continue the PowerPoint, and then we can have two different, we can have two resolutions on this item after we're done with the Q and A, if that makes sense, as far as a form.
Yeah, and I think we could also ask for public comment maybe after your next presentation.
But, so you have done a lot of outreach, and did it seem that the majority of folks were really in favor of this traffic calming effort and the results and outcomes of it? Is that?
I think so. I mean, a lot of the comments that we received from the planning commission meeting during the CDP approval phase, a lot of it was focused on the traffic calming elements of the project. And so we were asked to consider adding more, and we did as part of our design development review. And so that's definitely something that they were in favor of and spoke out regarding it.
Because we've certainly heard, you know, very legitimate complaints about, that's a very well-traveled street, weekend traffic, a lot of folks come in from the outside who aren't particularly respectful.
Going to the school, going to the senior center, there's doctor's offices on the corner.
So I think, you know, people will be very happy with the outcomes, and it sounds like you're also providing good guardrails to help people who might want to extend payments and payment plans, et cetera, from the financial impact. And the grant is incredible in terms of how much it's reducing that actual cost. So, yeah, it's a complex project, and I'm glad we're... But, you know, again, sometimes we just have to repeat the education pieces that Councilmember Ruddick is speaking about. And, you know, I think when we update the site, it's just the more detail, you know? It's okay, well, this is Phase One. Housing, houses, numbers, X through this, we'll have these hours, seven in the morning, I think is the current, seven to five. Seven in the morning with heavy machinery could be pretty jolting to anybody, but letting them know is, no, that won't go on in your part of the street for a whole year, it might just be a couple of months. So I think the more information, the more, you know, people won't be as anxious about the whole actual execution of the construction.
Yes, a question about how the residents of Poplar Street are going to be affected by this construction and the traffic, you know, is going to be like detour traffic to go to Seacrest School. Is that going to be available, or how is that going to work?
I think if we're ready, I can kind of go into the next part of the presentation.
Oh, yeah.
Was there anything else on the DSA, Vice Mayor? So I'll just, yeah, I'll run through this, and I think some of the questions will be answered, and I'm happy to expand on them as well. So the next request would be the construction award. So we received six bids back in July, and we were going through the engineer's estimate, and we ended up getting one that was below the estimate by a local contractor. So that's Half Moon Bay Grading and Paving, which we are recommending for award tonight. As far as the project expenditures, I just wanted to kind of provide a high-level overview of what the costs are related to that. So this 15% contingency in some of the dollar amounts that we have covers Geotech Design Support Services, as well as the bid alternate that we had on the project. And again, the funding that we're requesting tonight is a majority out of OBAG II grants. We have funding out of our Streets and Road Fund 123, as well as our CCAG Measure M Fund balance of 265 that we're looking to apply to this project. And in the case of the collection of the cost sharing with the deferred street agreements and future deferred street agreements, or future participation, we would be reimbursing that fund 123 to be utilized towards any street improvements in the future. So that's the way we're looking at it tonight. As far as the recommendation, that's, okay, this is the one. So as far as the project start and some of the impacts in the schedule, so right now we're looking at a November start. There are, we have been working closely with the Coastside County Water District. Specifically, they have a water main replacement that was necessary before our project. So we were able to coordinate with them, and they're actually starting construction very soon. And so we're anticipating, we're bringing our contractor on board, starting to look at some of the submittals, some of the paperwork part of the construction side of the business that we can get going now, while CCWD and their contractor finish up that replacement. They're also going to be adjusting the utilities and the water meters to future grades. So this saves, you know, there's a lot of cost savings on both sides, both for the district as well as the city in doing it in this fashion. I know in the staff report, I think we overestimate a little bit. I think we're looking at the construction schedule, it's probably closer to nine months as far as the overall construction. Of course, that's going to be depending on weather. Now, the construction duration is going to be, it's going to be at different phases. So there's going to be some activities that will be noisier than others, and there's going to be some impacts that are going to require some detours versus other impacts. And so what we're considering right now is partial, is some closures for Poplar Street for certain phases. So for example, when we're doing some major, you know, when we're starting to do the street pavement, for example, for that week or so, it would be a lot faster for us to close it to through traffic and only allow folks that are living within Poplar to access, just to reduce the amount of overall construction time necessary for the contractor to be out there. So there are some, you know, there's some areas, so we're not considering closing the street completely the entire time, but there'd be some, sometimes during those phases of construction where we would look at reducing to only local traffic. We also have general construction hours of Friday, Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Our code actually is 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, but no contractor wants to work from 7:00 to 6:00 PM. But as far as the different types of activities, so there may be, you know, things like saw cutting of the existing asphalt. Some of that stuff's really noisy. So we're going to work with the contractor, and we have a little bit of control on that, which is, some of those noisier things, we're going to start later. We're not going to start at 7:00 AM on some of that stuff. You know, a lot of, you know, you could have the contractor starting to show up to the site at 7:00, but they may not start until 7:30, 8 o'clock. And so that's going to be part of what we look at during the construction, the pre-construction meeting with the contractor, is what areas of work are going to be the high-noise generating pieces? And let's really try to minimize those and try to isolate those so that, one, we can try to work through those quickly. So if there's a street closure that could help expedite some of that work, we can do that. You know, again, if we can start later in the day, I think that's another option that we do have. And then also, it gives us, it gives us the ability to provide that information to the public, the residents, in advance. And so one of the things that, I didn't run into one of the residents along the street earlier today, and we've talked, again, with a number of residents over the last year or so, but that was one of the concerns that they had, was about the notification and knowing when the construction's happening and the hours. And so, you know, one of the things that I think we can easily do is have a small community meeting, invite all the folks that live on Poplar through the project segment, and provide more details as far as the construction impacts. And so that's what we're going to do as part of the kickoff for this construction, would be to have that community meeting. So that's it for the presentation. I have, there's two recommendations, and I'm happy to take any other questions, and I think we also have maybe some public comments.
Because there are going to be different phases on the project, would there be a way that you can actually come up with like a calendar about what's going to be happening, what days, and with a schedule for the residents of Poplar Street, so they know what's happening, you know, on the street?
Yeah, we can do that. Generally, for construction contracts, we get what's called a two- or three-week look ahead, because again, you know, every week, there could be something that comes up that changes the schedule. But what we can do is make sure that we incorporate that two-week look ahead into our communication with the residents, because that does give a really good outlook into what those impacts and what construction is going to be happening at those specific dates. So we can certainly incorporate that.
Just also, maybe a recommendation. There's a couple of groups, like Coastside Family taking action. They would probably welcome you coming to one of their meetings, especially, you know, parents who are commuting and figuring out how to drop their kids off at school. And then there's going to be times where, you know, that traffic might be really slow, or at least in their part of the street. And I think the more they can make, you know, plans, maybe commute a little earlier, kids go with someone else, whatever it is, they're a good group, because they'll give you a lot of, you know, good recommendations and ideas that we may not have thought of on how to handle those situations. And, but yeah, there you get both people who are commuters and people with kids getting, people getting kids to school and can think of lots of potential pieces of information they need to work around, so just a thought.
School ought to be notified, you know?
And school, maybe the PTA there, yeah, things like that.
Yeah, the senior center, the Seacrest School, Cabrera Unified as well, they'll all be notified. But yeah, we can certainly look at other stakeholder groups and reach out to them as well.
Yeah, because they all have community meetings sometimes, and they'll know, yeah, show up. And they'll learn a lot, so great.
Two, having a construction project manager on site and introducing that manager to the community, so they can go up to him during the day, they've got an issue, they can go up and they say they know that man, and they can speak directly to them. I think that's so critical.
I agree. I think having a good project team to deliver it is going to be critical to any project, especially one that is going to, you know, that has the potential to impact residents like this one.
Well, on Phase One of your discussion tonight, I am leaning toward option two. Other council members are leaning toward option one. I'm wondering, since we don't have to make a decision on that tonight, if we might want to put off making that decision? I don't know. How do other people feel about it?
Mayor Penrose, we do have one public comment.
Sorry, I thought you said none. Okay, apologize. Amy?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thanks.
Excellent. Thank you all for this conversation. I am one of the residents on Poplar who will be impacted by the billing, and it's nice to see some numbers associated, because there have been some wild speculation about how we are going to get billed for this. And I was surprised to see that there was a version granted to save money, but to eliminate the traffic calming, because I think that is a critical part of the improvements. You know, most of us who live along here plan on this being our lifetime home, and it's cheaper to just invest now and improve our quality of life by not having these cars screaming up and down the street. It is really challenging to commute to work. I commute by bike, I walk my dog for an hour in the morning, and people driving their kids to school don't really slow down for people on foot. I know the sidewalks are going to change that, but slowing them down in general will improve just the quality of living on the street. That's it for me, thanks.
Thank you.
If I may, through the mayor, respond to that. If I may, through the mayor, respond to that. So yeah, the, the, thank you, Amy, for your comments. Apologies, it might have been a little confusing. Our intent is not to remove the traffic calming elements from the project, but it was just an alternative of not passing the cost on to the residents of Poplar Street. That was, that's the only thing. Regardless of the option one or two, the funding amounts will change, but the project construction will remain the same.
Yeah, so, so just to clarify, it sounds like, grateful that Amy brought this up because it seems like maybe there was some confusion. Essentially, the project is designed and it includes traffic calming and under any scenario, that traffic calming would be included. The option A and option, or option one and option two that Maz presented earlier were just about how we calculated the cost that would be passed along through the DSAs. Option one included the cost of traffic calming in that calculation, which is why it was a higher cost. I think it was $146, something along those lines per linear foot. Option two removes the cost of the traffic calming. And I think our justification is everyone benefits from it, not just the people living on that street. This is a, an important roadway that serves more than just this neighborhood. And so we would remove that cost before making the calculation of the cost per linear foot. And so it's a way of reducing the cost to the people that live on that street, but again, including those improvements either way.
So who picks up the cost?
The city would, would cover the cost through our road fund as opposed to passing that cost along to the residents of that street directly.
Which is covered by the grants.
Only a portion of the project is covered by the grants. I think Maz, we said it's about 80% of it is covered by grants.
Yeah, it's a portion of it. So here you can, in the green on this page, the Obag 2 grant is 1.2. The Streets and Roads Fund 123, that's our major fund. That would be where we would be.
So bottom line, how much more, how much would it, more would it cost the city to go with option two?
I hear you. So the difference would be, so we'd be looking at getting closer to 100,000 from all properties developed and undeveloped in DSAs under option one. Under option two, we would be recovering about 40,000, so the $60,000 difference.
Okay, that's always, I always just always like the bottom line. So the bottom line, option two will decrease the costs for residents, but cost the city $60,000 more. Is that correct? That helps.
That is correct.
Now we.
Thank you. This is why participation by the community in these meetings is important because sometimes we miss something. So, or we don't realize that there's confusion about something. So thank you, Amy, for your participation tonight. It was very helpful.
Great. Well, then.
I'm in favor of option two.
Any, let's have a motion then from council members.
Will that be a separate motion to go for option two as an instruction or, or just tell you?
I think you can, I think you can go with option, this recommendation number one, just specifying which option. So option two is understood.
I would like to make a motion that we authorize staff to, one, proceed with requesting cost sharing participation by properties having a deferred street agreement adjacent to the project site of Poplar Street between Main Street and Highway One, including future cost sharing using option two for undeveloped lots.
We're going to use two for all of them.
For.
Oh, okay.
Sharing for undeveloped lots and.
Got it, whole thing, whole cha-cha, got it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Raarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Can we have a motion or do we have discussion on phase two of the presentation tonight?
I move that we authorize the city manager to award and execute a construction contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Half Moon Bay Grading and Paving, Inc. of Half Moon Bay, California, in the amount of $1,445,365.87 and approve a construction contingency not exceeding an amount of $216,804.88 for the Poplar Street Traffic Calming and Safety Project, Phase One, CIP Project Number 593.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Raarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move on to item 3D, SAM Operations and Maintenance Budget Amendment Request, Princeton Pump Station Capital Replacement Project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am again, Ozbuzy Zergina, Public Works Director and City Engineer for the City of Half Moon Bay. I'm here tonight to present this budget amendment from the Superior Authority Midcoast Side. So as far as the, the request or the recommendation from the city staff is to adopt a resolution deferring the requested budget, budget augmentation, increasing the prior approved IPS project, known as the Princeton Pump Station Capital Replacement Project pending a renewed stipulation to pander protest or the final resolution to court action. Little overview, SAM provides sewer treatment to the city Granada Community Services District as well as Monterey Water and Sanitation District. The services are provided under JPA or Joint Powers Authority of these three member agencies. Overall, the plant operates at an average of 4 million gallons per day of dry weather flows. And our general operation maintenance costs are based on those flows from prior, from the previous calendar year, which are listed below. Tonight, we are, the SAM General Manager proposed a budget amendment to the budget that was adopted by this, by our city council on June 28th of this year. Overall, this was what was adopted as part of that 62823 action, which was a combined O and M budget for the next fiscal year, '23, '24, of 7.4 million, of which the city's portion would be 4.5 million, which is a 7% increase from the previous year. The overall SAM budget increased about 11%. The budget amendment request for the Princeton Pump Station Replacement Project was originally, this was originally budgeted as part of the SAM's fiscal year '22, '23 budget at 1.2 million, $1.2 million. The city has been continuing to protest its obligation to fund the Inertai Pipeline System projects or IPS. And so what was, what happened was after, after this budget was adopted, the project was put out to, after our '23, '24 budget was adopted, this project was put out to bid and the numbers came back higher. And the higher numbers were brought to a SAM board meeting and was pushed, put back to the member agencies for adoption of budget amendment. And so this, two months later, we're looking at a request for an additional 1.3 million of the city's share, which would be about 818,000. And then SAM was also requesting an additional 35,000 towards professional memberships and fees. And what's, and in the staff report, I described it a little bit more detail, but just a little high level is, you know, we, we looked at the project cost originally as part of the, you know, it wasn't brought as part of the '23, '24 budget. And then when the bids came in, they were higher than expected. But what's being requested as part of the amended budget is actually more than just what was originally proposed in the bid. There is additional improvements that are, that are being requested and required, although the planning and, and how this project was put together and presented to the member agencies is a little bit concerning. And so that's what we, so what we have tonight is based on our concerns with the IPS system and our pending litigation, we are recommending that we defer this request.
Is there, are there clarifying questions from council? We'll go to public comment.
Thank you. First is Jeremy Youngres.
Okay, so, can you all hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name is Jeremy Youngres. I'm General Counsel for Superior Authority Midcoast Side. I have the, the honor of serving with two of your council members and, and grateful for the opportunity to speak to you. Definitely was not planning to come here tonight and speak, but when I read what was being recommended, I just found out about it today, it did seem like it was important to, to bring to the council's attention that deferring action on the requirement or the funding of the pump station is, is probably a risky proposition that, that we're asking you to give your, to give the city council members who serve on SAM the ability and the flexibility to be able to vote to fund the Princeton Pump Station. A couple of reasons for that, and I guess I'd first ask you, I did submit some written comments, I was asked to prepare them, those should have been provided to everyone, I'd ask you to consider those. It provides more detail as to concerns with what was in the staff report. We think there was some information that wasn't quite right. So I'd ask you to, you know, the main thing is, this has to be done by June 30th, 2024. We have the Montero Force Main, which, you know, we were able to obtain an extension for the completion of that for a couple of years, but there is no opportunity for extension of, of the Princeton Pump Station. And it's a facility that's had a lot of problems in the past. And so we got nine months to get it done and it's going to take nine months. Kishan Prativadi, General Manager from SAM, will be getting on, speaking as well, but there's just not, we don't have months to kind of go back and forth and try and get this contract awarded. We need to get it done and if we don't award it in the near future, we may lose the bid as well. So if we wind up in a non-compliant situation with the ERF, it doesn't benefit the city either. If we have spills or damage that occurs to the, to the pump station, or if we have additional spills, it doesn't benefit the city either. So I would just ask you to consider, you know, if you want to pander protest, do it by all means. As far as needing a stipulation, court order stipulation, agencies pander protest pretty regularly, it's not something that's very unusual. But to have a courted stipulation, particularly when the case is actually pending before the Court of Appeals, and I would argue, I'm not sure the trial court even has the authority to enter a stipulate, to enter a stipulation in order right now. So I would just seriously consider doing as requested, as what we've requested in the comments, written comments we provided, and provide your, your representatives the ability to vote to approve the contract, to fund the work that needs to be done ASAP. And I appreciate your letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Kishan Prativadi.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, honorable city council members. My name is Kishan Prativadi and I'm the General Manager for Superior Authority Midcoast Side. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak on this item. My General Counsel, Jeremy Youngres, has already elaborated on this requirement, but I just wanted to also put in a few items. I requested, I request city council to approve the amended budget and not defer it. The project of the Princeton Pump Station Replacement is important for SAM for several reasons. It is unsafe for staff to work at this location as it is a high-risk confined space entry for any maintenance required on the pumps or wells out there. And it is important to replace this. As for the consent decree that we have signed with ERF, the project needs to be completed by June 30th, 2024, and it takes about nine months to complete this project. As for the staff report, which was presented to you, a decision for funding most likely will take place after the court's decision, which will be probably around January 5th. That's the way I read it. And that will be too late then to finance the project, to start and complete it by June 30th, 2024. Now SAM does not have adequate funds to start this project immediately. A considerable amount, almost to the tune of 1.6 million, has been spent on winter storm damage, which took place in the early part of this year. Although SAM has applied for FEMA funding as well as insurance, it is not known as to when we will receive these funds. Therefore, my request is not to defer the budget amendment. Councilmen, please approve the budget amendment or at least approve for financing this part of the project, whether it's with or without protest, I leave it to you. But my request is to finance for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There are no other speakers, mayor.
Thank you. I'm bringing it back to staff to discuss, but I would also like to ask our engineer, Maz, to explain his understanding of the funding of the, of the Princeton Pump Station. It was my understanding that SAM did have the funds to begin the project, not to complete it, but to begin it, and that the budget amendment was only important so that the project could be completed. And so my thinking was that SAM could go ahead, start the project using the funds that have already been approved by our, our council as well as our board members and get going on the project, that it was not something that would be stopped.
That, that is correct. And that was the way that the, this was, item was originally presented to the SAM board was as an approval of a contract, knowing that the full amount would not be expended in the next couple of months and that there would be enough fund balance to at least get us through the early part of next year where a lot of these, you know, the payment under protest and the court action would be resolved. So that is my, that was our understanding as well.
Great, thank you. And can I ask our attorney to speak on it? Thank you.
Yeah, so happy to speak on a couple of items that, that came up in public comments. So this project is at issue in the, the pending litigation. There was a reference to a pending decision. There is a court date of, of October 5th for a hearing. The court at that point would have at most 90 days to issue a decision, hence the January 5th date. That's an outside sort of worst case in terms of the amount of time it would take. I expect it would actually take less time. And there was also a reference to a stipulation. And just so you know, the city did reach out to our, other member agencies to, to request a renewed stipulation specifically for this project and have, you know, that request was not granted. If it is, the, the, you know, motion before you would be pending a renewed stipulation. So there would still be that option if the parties were to agree to that, which has already been drafted by SAM's council. So if the parties were to all agree to that, this resolution would cover it.
Could you just explain for the public what the stipulation is?
Yes. It's a fancy word for an agreement, essentially. It would be an agreement amongst the three member agencies that if the city is successful in the appeal, that the money that it pays for IPS projects, including this one, would, you know, could be recovered by the city.
Thank you. Anyone on council wish to discuss? Okay, seeing no discussion, may I have a motion?
I move that we adopt a resolution deferring the requested budget augmentation. augmentation, increasing the prior approval IPS project of the Princeton Pump Station Capital Replacement pending a renewed stipulation to pay under protest or final resolution in the court action.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I believe that ends our items for tonight. Are there commission or committee updates?
Yes, we'll have a brief update on our most recent Recreation Commission meeting from Assistant City Manager John Doughty.
Should be 10 minutes, 20 minutes at most. Thank you. Am I coming through? Okay. On the 23rd, we had a long-awaited commission meeting. We've had sort of a summer recess due to a lot of schedule challenges. We spoke regarding the Streetscape Master Plan updates. We gave them a, a preview of what you went through again tonight a bit in terms of understanding what was ahead, and next week, we have a joint meeting of the Parks and Rec and Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee, meeting with Tool and doing and working through the Streetscape plans. So tune in for that. That'll be on Thursday. We also went over, Maz's staff went over the Main Street resurfacing update, which includes the various charrow painting, the green striping for bike access and various components to that, which is being well received. We also went through a Carter Park update and happy and pleased to be able to announce to them and the world that we have access to the site for construction and construction is commencing, and although it's been ongoing in earnest, it will be moving forward with the new access through Stone Pine Center. And then we also had a great Summers End discussion and update, and I would remind everybody the 23rd of this month is the Summers End Bash on Main Street, and we hope to see you. I know that there are folks looking for volunteers, including the friends of Half Moon Bay Parks and Recreation. So if anybody's interested in the public or anyone around for that to, to help out, we, I know they would appreciate that. And that really is what we talked about for the most part. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll also have a brief update on Planning Commission and a look ahead at some of the upcoming meetings from our Community Development Director, Jillikas.
Thank you. Good evening. Nice to see you all. With the Planning Commission, despite the fact that we've been a little bit challenged with running by the seat of the pants for a quorum all summer, which is understandable. The commission has been very productive. Their last meeting on August 22nd, they approved a Caltrans bridge project, which is to take care of some erosion issues under the Highway One crossing of Pillar Cedos Creek. It's a very challenging project technically and with the biology issues. So the commission was very, very focused on all those details, and they did a great job. Our next meeting is next week, September 12th, and they will see the Streetscape presentation that you had tonight. They will also get an update on the Smithfield Master Plan, which is meant to prepare them for the forthcoming coastal development permit and environmental review for that project. Then on September 26th, John Doughty will be bringing the safety element as a study session item to the commission. And we are looking at a full fall for items coming forward every month after that, including the housing element, which we're, we're trying to weave into the end of our year work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Is that it for commission committee updates?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, do we have any items for future discussion? Ah, council reports.
So at our last Sewer Authority meeting, we had a presentation by Integral Consulting, who's doing the sea level rise and coastal erosion vulnerability assessment for the sewer plant. You know, trying to answer questions like, do we need to move the plant? How do we protect ourselves from intense storms and flooding, et cetera, et cetera? And so we got a, a progress report and the the draft final report will be presented at a meeting in October. So we're, we're getting very close. It looks like we may be able to berm the plant at various heights for covering, you know, at least a couple of decades that we probably don't have to move the plant right away. So that's, that's good news, but we'll get more detail in October. And I had one, one shoreline meeting, and we'll have some interesting news soon about what's going on with one shoreline, but I can't talk about it now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, any items for future agendas? Seeing none, I will adjourn this.
I can't hear you.
Oh. Yes, I apologize. I wanted to adjourn this meeting in honor of two gentlemen. One is Half Moon Bay's own astronaut. Bobo is his nickname. I'm blanking on his name. Bo Bobco? Great. And also Bob Sens, who is our local benefactor who was responsible for the Dream Machines show every year. So I'd like to adjourn our meeting in, in respect of those two wonderful gentlemen who gave so much to our city. Thank you.